On Tuesday, June 18th, 2013 at 7:21 PM. I'll ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly and the Shaw Municipal Center.
All right, thank you. And I'll welcome citizens and I'll address any questions or concerns not on the agenda. Okay, for the duration of the meeting, if there are comments or issues from the citizens here in the audience, you'll need to be acknowledged by the council before speaking. And then please come up to the podium and you'll be able to address us at that point. Number three, the consent agenda. I've been told items five and 10 will be brought down. Item five will be the first item in new business, so that we can get Brian on his way. And then item 10, we'll probably just tack right onto the end of new business. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, new business. Temporary Class B picnic license for the Milton FFA alumni.
Mr. Mayor, Brian Paul had contacted me indicating that he had intended to expand the area for which alcohol would be able to be served at Schilberg Park in association with the FFA's softball tournament and the festival activities that they run up there. The Personnel and Finance Committee, due to a very extensive agenda and a short meeting timeframe, did recommend to the council that this concept be brought before the council for discussion and consideration. Mr. Paul from the FFA is here to present what his intentions are related to the plan are tonight, and then leave it to the full council to discuss and make a decision.
All right, thank you. Brian Paul, Chairman of Milton Fourth of July Celebration. First of all, thanks for all your continued support. You guys always do a great job every year and blah, blah. We really mean that. Thank you. This year, what we want to do is we want to try and solve a few problems before they happen. All the past couple of years, we've had a few minor problems, parking, people sneaking alcohol and things like that. So one of the ways we want to try and correct that before it happens is by expanding the beer tent. I know it sounds contradictory, but by making one entry point and one exit point, people aren't allowed to sneak the beer in, or you have less congestions in the bathrooms, things like that. I believe you guys have all been briefed on what I would like to do, so I'd like to field any questions. We'll go that way.
Chief, what's your opinion?
I like the way that it's, we configured it last year. It worked out well. We haven't had any problems up there in the past couple of years. It's run well and I like the system that's in place with checking IDs. The servers are very responsible. If, I guess I would have to defer to Brian if he feels that this will be more manageable for his people. We don't check IDs at the door anymore. That's not our responsibility. We're there for police enforcement and as a presence, so that's not part of our job. But we do go through the crowd and we do check people there randomly to make sure they're of age, and we haven't had any problems. But I guess, Brian, if you could just, what's your rationale for expanding it and to what areas would be helpful to explain?
My rationale for the first one is helping ease the ID members or the people taking IDs, because we have so many people going in and out of the front entrance. If we can incorporate a bathroom inside the fenced-in area, we don't have all those people going in and out. So we have less congestion there, people can do a better job there. I think that's one of our main concerns right now, just making it easier for the people checking IDs.
And that would incorporate which bathrooms?
The bathrooms down by the ball diamonds.
Okay.
Not the main bathrooms. There are still good bathrooms up above for everyone, by the car involved, people on the blacktop, food vendors, things like that, for all the kids up there. So just the ones down by the bathroom.
So for the people to get in to use the bathrooms that are in the center of all the ball diamonds, they would have to come into technically the beer tent to use them?
That is correct, yes.
And is there going to be people at both entrances then?
We only have one entrance. Where the entrance was last year, and you asked me if I thought this was manageable. I actually think it's more manageable because of the one entry point. We've always had one entry point and still could be that way. Where we have our fences in a good area, we have six-foot fence incorporating everything. So I can't handle beer over there because I'm only five foot four. And I believe that's one of the regulations that we have to meet is six-foot fence. So by doing this, we're going to have less weak points. Like I said, we're just trying to help solve problems before they arise.
And the wristband is new this year?
The wristband was new last year, kinda. We did it last year, but we ran out the, halfway through the second day because we grossly underestimated how many people were up there. We went through 1,500 in the first day. So we've upped that number by a lot this year. So we have, we're working with a couple of different groups on checking IDs and we're going to have a much, we always have people walking around, making sure everyone that is drinking has a wristband. So it makes it easier on ourselves too that just, the wristbands make it a lot easier so we can see who is drinking, who is not, things like that.
We had this request last year, I believe, that they wanted to make it larger. I can't see allowing mothers to bring their kids into a beer tent to go to the bathroom.
They wouldn't have to.
They wouldn't?
No, there's bathrooms outside the beer tent.
I thought you said they did.
There are bathrooms inside and outside.
The outside ones are the ones we're more familiar with, right when you walk up the main gazebo. The ones that will be fenced in are the ones that are in the lower part where the four diamonds intersect.
Okay.
There's bathrooms down there.
And that's generally a lot less traveled, Maxine.
Why they need so much room for beer. And everything, everything in this city is connected to liquor somehow or another. I just can't understand it. I mean, I don't belong to WC TU, but I just can't understand why everything has to be liquor.
Well, it's a little bit difficult for us to really argue everything has to be liquor when we just approved all those liquor licenses.
We didn't. We approved a bunch, but it's, everything is, everything is based on liquor. I, the city is just...
Well, and you're right, but at the same time, I think if you expand it, you're probably going to have less problems because people have more room.
And there's more people to be able to drink.
I don't think any more, I don't think, I don't think any more people are going to drink. I don't think any more people are going to drink.
Then why you need more room?
Because they want to manage it better.
I think the point he's trying to make though is, right now, if they do have to use the restroom, they've got to go out of the fenced area and come back in, and that puts a load on the people at the gate. Whereas if they're in there and they stay in there, it's a little bit easier to manage it. It cuts down traffic.
The ones that are exiting, well then they got to come all the way around and come back into the, you know, it's hard when they exit and enter in the same place for one person to watch. So that's why I understand what Brian is saying, that I think it'd be easier to manage.
Well, I think we could give it a try for this year. Obviously, if it doesn't work out, we're not, you know, we would have to make some sort of modification for next year. I mean, I don't want to make things more difficult for them or create safety issues where there aren't any.
One question I have, remember last year I had two people call me about the people driving out onto, onto, or not high street...
Rainbow?
Driving out, because people were walking, you know, they're walking in and, you know, they had legitimate complaints about, you know, the cars speeding out of there and little kids riding their bikes coming around. They're not waiting for a car to come out, you know, so I don't know.
It's already been...
It's not subject to the beer thing.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, we have to stay on topic, but Chief, Chief and Howie did meet with Brian and they discussed the safety issue there. So it's been addressed, yes, yes.
I've run an event a few times like what Brian does, and I cannot imagine having people going in and out to get to the restrooms. In the past, when I ran an event, when my people went in, they stayed in, and when they left, it's because it was over. This will make it a lot easier for them to manage. The, I don't think you're saying that you need the extra room, you just need the bathrooms to be apart.
They'd be a big help, yes.
So, anyone care to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that allow them to expand their area that they serve beer in so they can better manage the people there.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's Brian.
Thank you.
All right, on to the old foray. Discussion and possible action regarding new police station, municipal court, city administration, building project update.
No, that one we moved to the end of new business.
Yes, that's okay.
We're going to get the guys who are on the clock out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do actually have a, an update for you from Angus and Young, Mr. Tibbetts. It's his discussion and possible action regarding the new police station, municipal court, city administration, building project. A is actually the update to let you know that the Plan Commission did approve the site plan tonight, and just a very brief update from Jim from AYA about where the project is at and being let potentially at the end of this month, and then back from bids at the end of next.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jim Tibbetts with Angus Young Architects. I will be the project manager in the project from now, well, I've been working on it the last couple of months now through the end of construction. As we mentioned in the, earlier in the Plan Commission, we're in the throes of completing the construction documents, and internally, we're going through what we call our QA review. The drawings are done. We have an independent person in the office actually look at the drawings for an outside that has not been involved in the project, kind of gives an outside perspective of what the contractors might see. Once that review is done at the end of this week, our staff does pick up any comments and red marks that has been found in that internal investigation. Our plan is to go out for bid, actually a week from tomorrow, with the bids being submitted on the 23rd of July. That is keeping in context with the schedule that had been outlined a couple of months ago, with hope of having an award of August 6th. I believe that would be the next meeting, council meeting, and then commencing with construction thereafter, probably around the 19th of August. That's short and sweet since I guess I'm on the clock.
It's an exciting project. There's a lot of interest, not only in the community that I've heard from people through softball and whatnot, but actually in the construction community too. So that's, it's a good time to have a project go out to bid. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Jim. All right, on to discussion and possible action regarding initial resolution 2013-10 authorizing $1.81 million in general obligation bonds for police municipal court facility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As outlined in the council agenda packet, there's a detailed memo about what the various financial impacts on the city's debt would be. Todd Taves and Maureen, and Maureen, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name.
Shia.
Shia is here from Ellers to discuss what the long-term fiscal impacts would be on the city's overall debt service, the payments, the structuring of that debt as presented by them, and a pre-sale estimate is available in front of you for your review. Important to note, I think publicly, and I'm not sure we've done as good of a job as we possibly can, so I'll just reiterate that, is that the borrowing, the debt that we're taking out is 1.75 for the construction piece plus the issuance costs that are rolled into that very debt, and this is for the police station, municipal court facility only. The city hall component is being paid for, or would be paid for in cash fully, with $600,000 of general fund balance, and then an additional $130,000 of wastewater fund. So we're not taking out any debt for the city hall portion, the city administration part of the building. And that is consistent with what the original project plan was when it was first given to Angus Young to design and for us to work with Ellers as it pertained to the financing piece to the project. Moving down to agenda item number C very quickly, I did provide in your council packet the two different options and the financial impacts, because we had originally looked at borrowing before we knew the strength of our fund balance in its totality, borrowing up to 1.9 million, thinking that we might only have 600,000 available for cash to use. So I did ask Todd, recognizing how many people came here in support of the library's expansion. One of the things I have always concerned for whenever we're doing any sort of a project is the fear of over-promising and then potentially under-delivering. You had 25 people in this room who, some of who had gone to the point of making a video talking about how excited they were about an expansion of a building. As you see, we get closer and closer to project implementation, you know, construction and then actually deliverable. One of the things I would hate to see happen is people get really excited about a two-floor library and then only have it to be a vacant building with no money and no plans as to how we're actually going to utilize that space. So I did have Todd run two scenarios for you, and those include the one to just do the police station, municipal court facility only, and the second would be for that additional $155,000, which would be startup money for the expansion of the library project. You see what the impact is on the city financially over the period of 20 years. It's presented to you in your agenda packet. You see that comparatively speaking, the total project cost, I don't want to minimize how much $155,000 is, but over the 20-year life of that borrowing, coupled with the fact that interest rates are starting to increase, I do think that if you, if you want to proceed with having some sort of a startup for the library expansion, that this would be an appropriate time to do it. Because by melding it into one issuance, you're saving on future issuance costs by not having to go in 2014 or 2015 for additional monies, because you've done it all at one time. It's generally less expensive. That's it in a nutshell. Todd and Maureen are here for, to walk through how this particular borrowing impacts debt capacity and any other questions that you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you for that description, Jerry. If you would pull out your handouts that he was discussing, we'll go through the details to overview the options that he just discussed. On the first page is going to be the details of the bonds issued just for the renovations of the building for police purposes only, and that would require an issuance of $1,810,000 in GEO bonds that you would authorize tonight. The second page is a estimate of the principal and interest structure over the next 20 years. The current market rates are reflected in this analysis, and I just want to point out that they are about a quarter to a half percent greater than what we showed you in February. And then in the next column in yellow titled "New Debt Only" is the projected impact to the tax rate and levy with this borrowing. If you would turn to the following page, this is going to be the option two, which everything is the same with the details, but we also have included the additional funds for library improvements. And with the library improvements included in the bond issue, that would be a issue size The next page is going to be the impact of the principal and interest, the debt, or excuse me, the principal and interest, tax levy and tax rate, including the library improvements in this borrowing. On, if you could direct your attention to the far right-hand columns in orange, this is the difference of option one versus option two, and the impact to the levy and rate between the two. And as Jerry just mentioned, the average annual difference between the two options is about $10,805 greater each year, and that is three cents per thousand on the tax rate.
And I get to give you a little bit of the bad news, you know, Jerry and Maureen already alluded to it, but rates have gone up fairly significantly over the last couple of weeks. And we included a couple of charts that are at the end of this, and what this is, is it's called the Bond Buyer Index. And what that, what that line represents is, if I'm an investor and I'm holding a highly-rated bond that has a maturity date of 20 years from now, this is the average yield or the interest rate that I'm going to receive as the investor. So this, this reflects kind of that long, further-out interest rate. And this is a one-year spectrum on this first page, and you'll see that, you know, we actually were about this high back in March. We went back down and, you know, at the far right-hand side is what we've seen here over the last couple of weeks. Now, you know, a lot of this has been created by uncertainty in the market with the Fed's comments the last go-around, where there was discussion of slowing down on the quantity of easing, where the federal government is buying bonds, makes the markets nervous, speculation that interest rates are going to go up, and indeed, they do as a result of that. Now, the Fed is meeting again this week. There'll be announcements tomorrow. You know, we don't know what that will be. It could provide some firmness to the market, and maybe we'll see a little bit of pullback, but, you know, we could also see this escalation continue. So we wanted to just kind of lay that out for you, because normally, we've got the good fortune of being conservative, putting some hedge in our projections, and then delivering you good news, you know, that we either met or came in lore. But I just want you to be aware that with the market conditions as they are right now, you know, we can't anticipate where it will be on July 16th, and we don't want you to be surprised if we see rates go up another quarter percent over the next month and the actual costs end up being greater than what we're showing here. Now, to put it into a little perspective though, you know, we've become very accustomed to low interest rates over the last several years, and this chart on the back of the last page is that same index over a period of 30 years. And, you know, that little run-up in rates we've had here over the last couple of weeks, when you look at it in that context, you know, we're still far below what the long-term historical averages are for a tax-exempt municipal debt. So on a, on kind of a short-term perspective, it seems like, you know, we may have missed something in terms of the timing, and, you know, there's going to be a penalty associated with that, but, you know, we need to keep in mind that on a long-term basis, interest rates are still very, very low compared to where they've been, you know, in the past. So just wanted to give you a little bit update on that. The other thing we're seeing is because there is this fear that interest rates are going up, we're seeing less appetite in the market for bond issues, particularly longer ones like this that are 20 years. So while we, it's great when we get four or five bids, we would also, if we were bidding this today, if we got two bids or three bids, we'd be happy with that. So the other thing you may see in terms of what the market is doing right now in bidding is we may only get a couple of bids when we offer these bonds for sale in July. And, you know, we'll continue to watch that. We're watching it all the time. We have sales all the time, and we'll keep the staff involved or informed in terms of what we're seeing, and let you know if we see things either moving back in a positive direction or in a negative direction.
Now, with this bonding, if we do this bonding, how does it put us, I mean, when we talked about this, Jerry, this kept us within our debt limit, right?
Correct. By statute, we're at 5% of equalized value that we can be. So that would give the city somewhere between 16 and 17 million. Because of all that we're doing, we're going to be in a state of elevated debt comparatively speaking to the national, or to the state averages, which is normally right around 50%. We're going to be at 75, 76, 77%, depending on what happens with assessments. But we also have a very aggressive pay-down schedule, meaning that, you know, we pay debt, our debt service payment as it is a percentage of what our overall levy is, is pretty high. We have a debt service payment that ranges, it has ranged, I should say, anywhere from a low of 660 to at the high end of, in the upper 770s on a debt service payment. So we're, while you're doing a lot, you're also paying down that debt very aggressively. So you do stay within your debt limits.
The reason I ask is I had a couple of people ask me where the city's getting all its money from. I mean, that was the way they put it to me, and I explained it exactly the way you just said it, so that's why I asked the question, that we're within our suggested debt limit, and that we are paying off aggressively so that we can still finance other projects later on. So I wanted to make sure I was correct because, in that, so.
So if we're paying off aggressively, that means we're making pretty high payments.
Right.
So, and now those high payments come from our tax levy?
Correct.
So if we're making high payments, that means that high payments are going to debt, they're going to debt service instead of maybe other areas of the budget.
Correct.
And so should a hotel want to come in and we would have to kick in some, we still have capacity?
Correct. And that funding source, I would encourage to be a different funding source, coming from TIF district increment to financially incentivize that.
So that you are compartmentalizing this one?
Correct. But you'd have to be cautious, because only a percentage of your debt can be tied to your TIF districts. I believe it's 12%.
That's actually with respect to valuation, not, not on the debt side. So, you know, the, the ability to, to support the, some incentive for a hotel would be strictly based on the performance of the tax increment district.
You would have about two to two and a half million, depending on what happens with assessments, to be completely maxed out. I would encourage you from a bond rating standpoint to not be maxed out, because we don't want to be seen at our full debt capacity. That may impact future borrowing that we do as we're aggressively making those payments. We're about as close as we would want to be. However, as you look at our long-term planning in the debt service area as it pertains to the fire station, you'll see that we have large-scale debt payments coming off 2016, 2017. That's why the folks at Ellers had structured that debt for this particular project to really be interest payments only. Principal starts kicking in. We believe we have about a $350,000 payment that falls off in 17, 16 or 17, if I'm correct, and that we will then have more capacity to do that fire station, which is why we encourage that to be plugged in there.
What is our, our general fund balance going to be at after we pay cash for the...
Right now, at the end of the financials that were audited, you were just over 1.8 million, so you'd be over 1.2.
You're at 40% of your total revenues. Our debt, our fund balance policy requires 25%, and what we've committed to in this project would not put you under the 25% commitment.
And is that relatively high?
The 25% is a little bit higher than what's average for municipalities. However, you have to remember that because for a small city, 25% of your revenues is maybe a million dollars. And so even though we're doing 25%, it's not a huge amount of money. It's a lot of money for us, but it's not a huge amount of money.
It does two things for you that we talked, and I talked to you a lot about, and I'll reiterate as we're, for the public as we're going through this process. One is it helps our bond rating, because we have that elevated debt to say that the city has good cash management practices and policies. We have a, from a historical perspective, we put money into fund balance at the end of every year. We have policies that don't allow us to use fund balance for just simple, to offset operational costs and to offset increases in the levy. You see a lot of government agencies use fund balance to mitigate tax increases. We don't. Every October, you folks make tough decisions. You don't do that. The second piece is it helps us avoid short-term borrowing. We don't have to go borrow money to make payroll for a couple of months like a lot of entities have to do, because our cash balance is strong enough that we're able to fully fund that without having to do short-term borrowing.
I'm comfortable with bonding both of these, as long as I know that that's the funding situation, if I understand it, so. I'm just...
Are you making a motion?
I mean, I don't want to have, the library have an empty building, because that's, that's something that draws people in, and Lisa does an excellent job, and we have to give her some of the tools to start getting ready for the expansion.
The library is one of our better draws. Thank you, and we should support that.
Make it out of motion.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make that a motion. We, we...
Would this be in regard to resolution 2013-10 authorizing 1.8 million? As Jerry outlined in his memo, maybe I should back up. There are several resolutions that we have listed on the agenda. Option one would be for the police department only, police department and municipal court. Option two would be police department, municipal court and library. It sounds like option two.
If, if I could, you actually will have some resolutions you're not going to adopt, because we had to give the flexibility to go either way. So what is listed as B is the police station. What's listed as C is the library, but if you are choosing option two, which is both, you actually need to act on both of those resolutions.
Correct. It would be resolution 2013, and we'll go through each motion. We would like a separate motion on each one, but it would be 2013-10, 2013-11, 2013-13 and 2013-15. motion on each one, but it would be 2013-10, 2013-11, 2013-13 and 2013-15, those other ones that we would just take no action on. So, if you choose option 2, 2013-10, resolution is the first one that we would seek a motion for.
That's the one I choose and seek a motion for is...
2013-10 approval, okay.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Resolution 2013-11 would be authorizing the bonds for the library project.
Motion in a second on Resolution 2013-11. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No action would be taken on Resolution 2013-12, as that refers to option 1 only. So, Resolution 2013-13 references option 2 that we would seek a motion on.
Motion in a second on 2013-13. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And 2013-14 would reference option 1 that would take no action on. Resolution 2013-15, preventing the sale of general bonds, that would reference option 2 that we would seek action on.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second on Resolution 2013-15. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Got them covered? I read my fine print very well.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right. Is this right, 4H?
Yep, we're down to H, yep.
All right, item 4H, discussion and possible action regarding operator license denial Kyle Lou.
We decided to deny that license with the recommendation from Chief Kirk and Chief Labor, that...
Particular person Kyle Lou has had his OWI violation November 2012. It's inside of a year, so we did tell him that we're going to deny, recommend for denial, and that he could reapply it a year.
You said he could reapply...
November.
This November.
Every year from his violation. Right, and I'm glad that you did that, because he does, I mean, patronizing the place, he is a great bartender, and he does a wonderful job, and he made a mistake, but you stayed with your standards yet, allowed him, you know, to do this, so I think it was a good action.
One thing I was thinking about when he was talking, I know this is a burden to him, but this is a burden he brought on himself, this is all part of the consequences of his bad choices.
And he can, he can still work in the kitchen there, right? He can just, he'll be part of the establishment, they just have to remove him from the...
The one reference that the owner, his father, Mike Lou, had made, he stated that Kyle closes one night during the week, so that would be the biggest change that they would, that Kyle just couldn't close, but he'd still be able to work with others.
Right, he can still serve, he can still serve alcohol.
Right, just not...
Just not by himself.
By himself.
Okay, I see, okay.
So, it, he's not by any means out of the job, it's just, he doesn't have the full capabilities of a license.
Okay.
He's still able to work, and, yep.
But I thought it was more than fair having him be able to come back in November.
So, the recommended action is to deny the renewal of operator license for Kyle Lou. Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
And then, just for the record, then, so the motion includes, it's based upon the recommendation of the committee, correct? Okay. For the reasons stated by the committee, I should say. With a denial like this, we have to, you have to make a record of why you're denying it, and so that's why it's being brought to the full council.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4I, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2013-05, scheduling a public hearing for curb and gutter assessments on Dickoff Drive.
My part, this resolution is required to schedule a public hearing, is how he mentioned before, and he could touch base, that there's out-for-bid right now for some work done on Dickoff Drive.
Resurfacing and some curb and gutter replacement, and existing curb and gutter replacements eligible for a 50% assessment cost. Not doing all the curb and gutter, just the worst sections, which probably 200 to 250 feet of curb and gutter street that's eligible for assessment. If you pass the resolution, then after the report is finished, you come back to the council for either not the assessments or any other assessments, and pass break is for the last 10 years has been to go with the ordinance and do the assessment process. But this just sets up a public hearing for the assessment report and hearing.
Bids will be opened on June 26?
Yes, it should be, and the July meeting is when the bids will be here for you to review this.
July 2nd, council will review and accept the bids, and at that time, we'll know an estimate for property owners. There was a notification, a report of the Director of Public Works, July 16th will be the public hearing, and that's when the property owners, if they will be assessed for any amount, they will know what that is, they'd be able to come to the council and discuss potential assessments, and at that time, you could decide if you want to make special payment arrangements for them.
Recommended action is to adopt Resolution 2013-05. That's a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4J, a deeper in the alphabet. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2013-07, compliance, maintenance, annual report, wastewater treatment plan.
Every year, we have to turn on report 2 to the DNR, it's a manual report, it has to be sent in to show that the plant's operating the correct way, so the monthly reports are sent in. Also, if you don't get a good score on it, then the DNR can make you do the improvements as a request, it's your phosphorus, it's the PODs, all the waste treatment happens on it. It's your maintenance remains, et cetera, finances, you know, that you have enough money to run the plant, people are getting a lot of education. This year, we had 4 out of 4, you know, for the upgrade coming out, so we're in the voluntary stages for any improvements in our management plan. Last year, we had 3.86, so we got better. It's always been almost 4, but this year was just 4 out of 4. So, and they, but the council does have to pass a resolution that you have, the plans aren't available for you to look at, and that, they just want to make sure the city council knows what's going on, how to treat the plant.
Good, so that's good news, and the recommended action is to approve Resolution 2013-07. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 4K, discussion and possible action regarding fire EMS department funding issues and the 2014 city budget development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this was something that I, and I know you wanted to bring to the council's attention. I know an older person, Welch, had talked about at the last meeting, is there anything else going to come up in the budget that we need to know about? And at that time, obviously, we didn't know this particular issue.
I had a premonition.
Yes, and, and so certainly, as the mayor suggested, perhaps you may have jinxed us.
Anything else?
I, please don't say that again. We, I will tell you this, we've had some challenges, and in talking on numerous different occasions with our treasurer, Connie Kemper, and our fire chief, Lauren Lippincott, I believe we're going to be able to come up with some strategies to address those challenges, but they're rooted really in two different issues. One of them being is that changes in Medicare and Medicaid and health insurance payments, as it pertains to ambulance bills and ambulance runs, have essentially made the EMS service no longer self-sustaining. That coupled with an issue of in 1997, you go back historically, I certainly wasn't here, but I got the perspective when I went down to the fire department, talked with Deputy Chief Lucas, and then Chief Lippincott, probably for about a good hour yesterday, to get the historical perspective on a loan that was done, and how that kind of came to be. Pre-1997, the city ran its own ambulance service, and it was going to have to potentially hire an ambulance director, and then Administrator Delo said, "We really don't want to be in the business of doing that, that's going to increase our personnel and our labor costs quite substantially, with the jointly-owned fire department considering taking over EMS." And so, they said that they would, and they were going to need an addition onto their building. At that time, the city had a substantially large fund balance, as we really have historically had throughout the late 90s and all the way into the 2000s, and said that, okay, to help out the fire, the joint fire department, the city will provide a loan to the EMS department, and essentially said that, you know, structured a 20-year note saying that, "You'll pay us back $286,000 over 20 years, and then these are going to be the payments," because EMS was actually a money maker back at that point in time, meaning that the revenue that we collected from Medicare, Medicaid, and the, all the ambulance runs from health insurance companies actually exceeded what the operational costs were. 2004, the EMS department had a greater challenge making its debt service payments, so then Administrator Schmidt said, "Let's restructure that and increase the payment, and actually amortize it over to what you saw in your packet, to a 4.75% note on the remaining balance, therefore increasing the total loan amount to about $313,000." And they were able to make those payments, sometimes I will say just barely, but they were always able to make those payments, and a lot of that has to do with some cash flow issues as it pertains to how the EMS function runs. Somebody, you know, calls 911 today and they need an ambulance, by the time it makes its way through that healthcare process, the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement, and then through LifeQuest, which is our billing agent, they, it takes about six months before they actually collect the payment. Well, in the interim, they have to pay the employees who've made the run, the paid-on-call volunteers, and they've got all the other operational components of running the department. So, when Connie and I await that payment, because we budget $24,000 in revenue for the repayment on that loan, we normally wait about six months for that payment, because we anticipated to come in at about the six-month point after the time that it would otherwise normally be due. So, we asked the chief for it at the end of the year and about mid-year, and say, "Okay, you know, we need that $12,000, because we budget $24,000 in revenue on that payment to the loan that was owed to us." So, we got to June, we asked Chief Lippincott, because we hadn't yet gotten the end-of-12 payment, for which that he thought that he had made, and we're looking for the 13 payment, and that's when he came to us and said, "The issues that were associated with sequestration and its impact on Medicare and Medicaid have dramatically impacted the ability of the EMS billing service, that being LifeQuest, to collect payment for us. They had just made their payment on the ambulance that they have debt on, and that they did not think that they were going to be able to make the payment, at least the full $24,000 payment." I know Chief Lippincott wanted to, and those members that are on the fire commission, you know, saw him send an email saying he wanted to talk to the fire commission about this first. The mayor and I discussed that request, and were wanting to be sensitive to having the chief have an opportunity to work it out with commission members first. There was no way that, I know either Mayor Fraser nor I felt comfortable with you seeing a borrowing scenarios for 1.8 or 1.9 million dollars and not telling you about that issue first. It's projected that the EMS service as a, as a function of our government, if it stays in its current structure and current service levels, will probably need about $25,000 to sustain it in its existing structure and its existing relationship with the town, of tax levy support to make its current payments. Now, that's just a very, very rough, very cursory number, because there's a variety of different ways that we could tackle this issue. The outlying issues are, that probably most important to the city's budget are, how do we get that $120,000 that's still out there, recognizing that EMS is no longer self-sustaining? Because equally split in its current relationship, it's a $60,000 obligation to the city and a $60,000 obligation to the town. The city probably has a variety of different ways to come up with that $60,000. I'm not really familiar with the town's financials, so I don't know what their ability is to be able to come up with that. Nor do I know, because we haven't had the conversation with their representatives on the commission, what their abilities, capacity or willingness are to levy for the EMS service, to actually, you know, ask taxpayers to say, "If you want an ambulance to come when you call 911 in the city or the town, whatever its coverage areas are, it's, the service is no longer covered by the fees that the EMS charges, it's going to be subsidized by the general tax levy." Absent new revenue sources or absent a different structure, all of those things which are outlined as potential options in your memo, or a merger of the two budgets, which is something that's being discussed, because fire does have some fund balance in its department budget, EMS really not so much so. So, if the department budgets were merged, that there's an opportunity there for perhaps some of the fire revenue that comes in to offset some of the EMS debt and operational costs. So, I really think that there's a variety of different ways that this issue could be looked at. I wanted you and the council to be made aware of it, so that you know what some of the challenges are, and what some of the things that we're going to have to overcome as we develop the 2014 budget. And it's going to be discussed at length by our fire commission members at future fire commission meetings. I would suggest that it probably should be a standing issue. We are fortunate enough to, this year, to have the council representative be our chair, that being Dave Adams. And so, I've had, I think, at least two or three phone conversations with you about it, and I know the chief has had one, Chief Lippincott has had one conversation about it. The one thing that has become abundantly clear to me, and this is, I want to be abundantly clear, no shape, way or form is this a Chief Lippincott fault issue. This is something that has just evolved as a result of external forces impacting him. But something that became very, very apparent to me yesterday in the hour that I spent talking to him, is that I really do think that our city staff, with the approval, obviously, of the fire commission, needs to be much more involved and much more supportive, if you will, in assisting with the accounting and the financing components of managing the financial affairs of the department. And the reason I say that is, we don't give any one of our department managers their budget money that you allocate, and then just say, "Here's the money, go do good." We have folks like Connie and Michelle and I, who are, you know, training and experienced in managing the financial components of municipal government, assisting that leader in each of the department, managing his or her budget. And when I went down to the fire department, there's Lauren and Jenny walking through and paying their bills and trying to figure it out, in addition to all of the other duties and responsibilities that he has as a fire chief. And so, I think in order to set that department up for future success, and I have no idea how the town's going to feel about it or not, and quite frankly, it's going to sound callous, don't care, because the city has a lot of investment into that department, and to see it run right, and to make sure that its financials are balancing, and to make sure that not only as a, as an owner, but as a creditor to the EMS department, that these issues get corrected, and that we made whole on what the taxpayer money obligations that are out there to the department to be made whole. And so, I think the only way that we do that is to give that department the same wraparound support that we give all our other service-providing departments, and say, "This isn't like a takeover sort of a thing as much as it is an assistive thing," and to help and to see the department be successful, to really encourage the full complement of resources and city staff that we have with financial expertise that can catch these things as they come up early on.
So, has the city of Milton, we have had the opportunity to refinance some of our debt at lower interest rates at different points?
Yes.
Okay. So, but as creditors, we have not, really, the fire department does not have that opportunity?
Have not asked, and we have not offered.
Offered, right. So, I mean...
Since the restructuring that...
Correct, in 2004, correct.
So, we have enjoyed lower interest rates, but we have not, I mean, and I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't have, but we're, we still have this, this money up to them at an interest rate that maybe it was low at the time, but we, we certainly are probably paying, you know, the highest rate. We're not paying interest rates that we paid in 97, right?
Correct, and nor, in 2004, I'm not sure how the 4.75 was established.
When was the going bond rate?
It was.
At the time.
So, what's the going bond rate now, or, what did we, what did they just tell us?
3, 3.75? No, I'm sorry, 3.85?
That's the bond rate for us, with stellar bond rating.
That's the bond rate for us, with the stellar, uh, bond rating.
Well, I'm just, you know, just throwing that out.
What was the interest rate? I'll see, I'll research and find out what the interest rate was on the loan for the fire truck. Because that was the city, because really, it's the city of Milton, it's the, um, town of Milton buying debt. It's really not a fire department debt, as per se. So, um, I can look at what that loan rate was with the First Community Bank, that we would've gotten, and I can get back to you on that.
How do other communities of this size that work with primarily volunteer fire departments and EMS, EMS services, partner?
There's a variety of different ways, and, and Milton's is probably one of the more progressive, and it's a jointly owned. Uh, there is a single ownership with contracts, that's one way, that, um, I've seen municipalities do it. There is such thing known as a fire or an ambulance district, and that's comprised of a variety of different owners, and then your percentage of financial input then creates your amount of weight on the board. So you'd have that number of representatives. Operationally, the cleanest is a single owner with multiple contracts, because then that particular owner has complete oversight and control over it, and then they set fees at which other contracting municipalities engage.
So it does not, though, fall back on to the municipality, though?
In this particular case, it, it will, because the city is an owner, uh, and the town is an owner. So yes, um, the liability for the debt rests half with us and half with the town. In hindsight, what probably should've been done in two thousand and four is, is done like we did with the fire truck, and we should've gone to each municipality and said, "Here's the debt, you have to approve it," because the Fire Commission and the Fire District, I'm sorry, the Fire Commission, is not a legal entity, doesn't have the ability to tax, doesn't have the ability to borrow money. It gets all of those powers through the municipality. So, eh, easy to say now, but that might be the other option, is to say, "Okay, there's this one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of debt that's owed to the city by this jointly-owned department known as the Joint Milton and Milton Township Fire and EMS Service."
So it's, uh, it's just to the city, it's not to the township?
Right.
I'm just wondering if there are other systems to model it after?
We've wondered that a lot, too, but...
Yeah, it just seems like there has to be other structures.
There's only one that's better, and that's one Jerry mentioned, where you've got one owner and everybody else contracts, that's the best way.
And, you know, that kinda gets you up to speed, I think.
And the reason that is, is because then that you control all of the capital purchases, all of the equipment that's necessary to provide for the municipality. Uh, there, there's a variety of data and variety of statistics, a- and I will say this, that as much as I love coming to these meetings, I will be a mainstay now at Fire Commission meetings along with county, so that, that we are in tune and in step with what exactly is being proposed, and then we can come back and report that to all of you. Um, not to say that, that, you know, the Fire Commission representatives, but there's gonna be a lot of discussion that they can't do that, but there's gonna be a lot of discussion, and I wanna let you know how that discussion will impact us budgetarily, depending on what decisions might be made by the Commission.
Your responsibility.
We have made several overtures to the, to the town, um, making our resources available, and they have taken this up on it, so...
Well, but we have it to the fire department.
Well, I mean, through Fire Commission, through Fire Commission.
One question we talked about, using our resources, do we have the capability?
I meet, um, I contacted our software company, and, um, I'm, I've determined that we do have, and our auditors, and we can, um, do their books without any additional purchase of equipment or, um, software. Because that was my main concern, if we had to either purchase software or purchase equipment that would make that viable, then what's the difference? Um, so I've confirmed that we don't. I meet with Jenny tomorrow, and we're going through, um, as a, in a CPA firm, what you would do is you would go through and you would be notified of how many accounts payable checks do they write them on? How many bank statements do they have, an activity that you would bankrupt? How much is their total payroll? How many payroll checks? What are the different benefits that those, um, people, and different types of wages that they would make? So Jenny and I are gonna meet tomorrow and go through all of those things, um, and we get what that is, and then I can make an estimate of the time commitment that we would make. I'll probably work with Michelle on the payroll side, and once we come up with the time commitment, then we can, um, have a better determination of what it would entail for us to take over those.
That's more what I was concerned about, the people time.
Yeah, and we are, we are meeting with her tomorrow. Um, I do think, my personal opinion, Jerry, if you're okay with that, is that if we're doing their books, then Lauren has the ability to call us and say, "Can you run the numbers for this? Can you tell me if we paid this? Can you tell me if this happened?" And he doesn't have that capability with a CPA without getting billed. And so it will make the, the process a little bit different in that hopefully we could give him some financial support that he may not have right now.
No, I think very highly of both Jenny and, and Lauren, and I just, to have to carry all that on their shoulders when something like this happens is way too much.
So we pay for someone to do their books. I mean, we get the reports that are produced thirty to sixty days late.
Sixty to ninety.
So would we eliminate that cost, or would we still have that firm doing what they do?
That's gonna be be between you and, that's maybe be how we negotiate that with the Fire Commission, whether we, um, charge at a nominal rate for that cost, knowing how many hours we expect to manage that project. And then, um, usually what a CPA firm does, um, is they have a, when you do client write-up, which is what you do people's books, is you have either an hourly charge, not to exceed so many hours, because you know how much it takes to come in, do the books, and then leave on a weekly basis, or you have a flat rate fee per month, knowing that this is what it is. You may, um, modify your hourly, um, time, because you'll have ten ninety-nines and W-two's, et cetera, et cetera, that you'll have to do for year-end processing, but you would come up with a flat rate fee to manage, um, that account. But that isn't anything that I can set, that is something that you would be in a negotiation or bid for. He did comment that, they did go up to bid and did not get any responses.
So do we have an, we, are we, so we didn't renew that contract yet, then?
Super.
Did?
He renewed it.
Okay, because he didn't get any other bids.
He didn't get any other bids, which probably calls him to question how they were sent out, but...
I don't have any, I'm not familiar, but that was the other thing I was thinking when we were talking about, um, support for, for them, is that Michelle is a city clerk and knows how to do all of that work, and, and she would be a good resource for Jenny. And with that, with that teamwork that we would build, I think that the city has a lot of support that they could offer to the fire department to get processes in place, so that they have better, um, functioning bid processes and financials and other office, um, things, so that, and, and I, and I'm not saying they'd do a bad job, but they'd have so much to do. I'm not sure they can do everything they're doing to the best of quality in the timeframe that they have.
So a cons- not a concern, but a thing that I'll point out is, um, I feel like the city is doing an awful lot, uh, for the Fire Commission. We have given them a loan, which we've then allowed them to late pay, um, for years. We gave them free use of a building that we've had, uh, more than a couple inquiries, um, uh, as a revenue-producing, uh, facility. And now we're going to offer them use, um, of our, of our staff. What's the town doing?
Well, it's, yeah.
I, 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 nobody, I mean, nobody from the town voted for, for me or any of us. I understand they have limited resources, but like Jerry said, um, you know, we're, we're gonna be in several hundred thousand dollars, you know, by the time we're all done here.
But part of it is, you know, we dumped it off on them. We said, "Hey, we don't wanna do this anymore, you take it over." They agreed to take it over in good faith, and, you know, so it didn't work out, so let's solve the problem, you know? And, you know, if the town can't, you know, it's, if they can help, they should. If they can't, then we're, we're gonna just have to figure it out ourselves, I guess.
At a certain point, is there a discussion? I know we're not a fire district.
Right.
But at a certain point, is there a discussion as to the makeup of that board?
I, I, I would think that there would have to be, because of, of what I would classify as your equity interest in the department as an owner. Um, you know, the, the town owes you that debt. You know, you, you arguably owe yourself that sixty thousand, and that one-twenty's still remaining, but the town owes you that money. Uh, I'm not sure, given the historical perspective of the five years that I've been here, that they're gonna be doing cartwheels about levying thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars. The, the, the challenging thing, and this is nothing new to all of you, but is that we just do our business so differently, comparatively speaking, than them. It's really hard to be an owner in the business of providing fire protection with someone. We, we just, we have so many different resources available to them, and it, it's not anybody's fault, it's just that we're, our makeups are very, very different. We have a, a full staff complement, we use financial consultants to, to guide us through our debt borrowing scenarios, a- and we do a heck of a lot of planning and a heck of a lot of forecasting. If we know that we're gonna need something, staff recommends that you tax a little bit for it every year, so that you can pay for it when it comes due. If we know we're gonna need a new snowplow, you know, we say, "You should levy sixty thousand dollars for the next three years, so when it comes up, you gotta buy it, you gotta buy it." And I think Lauren does a real good job of putting together a capital plan of what he needs and when he needs it, but because of some of the, the levy limit constraints and how they impact the town, they're not maybe as, as either willing or able to do their business the same way that the city would do its business. And, and that makes it, it a little bit challenging, because, um, you know, we, we wanna do things a certain way for the department, and they wanna do some things a certain way for the department, and we either all have to get on the same page as an equal fifty-fifty owner, and then if, if a group doesn't wanna be, or financially can't be, then I, I'm hoping that there's an honest and open dialogue that says, "Hey, this just isn't working for us anymore."
So how do we begin a di- dialogue that's not intimidating, or just be more informal?
Yeah. We, we, we had that discussion probably a year ago, when we talked about seeking commitment on, on borrowing for the, uh, station. We had that discussion when we borrowed for the ladder truck, and we did give them the use of our financial consultants and elders to say, "Hey, wh- what would a three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar debt look like for us on this? What's the levy impact? What's the, the debt service look like on us?" I mean, they don't have any debt other than that fire truck, so, um...
You mentioned capital expenses, how we budget for capital expenses, um, and people on the Fire Commission, obviously, are aware of this, but you talk a little bit about, you know, how, you know, maybe some of these problems are tied to, um, kind of the, the lack of, of planning, or lack of passing on those capital expenses to the contracted companies?
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's, you know, that, there's a lot of different things in there, and why, you know, when you folks see all the emails that I send out, they go, you know, "Mayor Fraser, council member, and city management team," there's a team of people, we meet monthly, that talk about, "Okay, what's impacting this budget? What do you have going on? What, you know, what is gonna be impacting how you do your part of the business, and how does that correlate to what's going on all over with the city?" In this particular case, we have people that will help our department managers up at City Hall that will say, "Hey, it looks like I'm going over in this budget, but I'm under in this budget, my revenue's way off here," and Connie can drill down those numbers. Real recently, over the last year, uh, we've introduced a, a live, interactive finance function, which is known as My Viewpoint, so any of the department managers or their support staff can log in, and they can see in live time what's happening in their expenses and their revenues. And we have those things, and I, and I have to believe that the town hasn't afforded those things, um, because they, they just operate differently. They have one, I think, only one part-time employee and a part-time chief.
So, so the discussion is around the dis- joint disconnect of two very proud entities trying to figure out how to go forward. Such a simple request.
Yeah, and I will say that financially, i- it is very beneficial for the city to be in a mutual ownership, simply because of how we provide that service and its cost per capita. Right now, because we're in a joint ownership relationship and what our levy obligation is, um, city of Milton residents get their fire protection at nine cents a day, and town residents, because of a different population size and the commitment that they make, they pay sixteen cents a day. Um, I would argue that some of that is mitigated by infrastructure costs. As Mayor Fraser indicated, you know, we provide an additional building, an outlet building for them at no cost. Um, we do provide additional city staff and resources in the budget development process, um, because we wanna protect our investment. I don't do that just necessarily for the benefit of the department, but to ensure that the money that our city taxpayers put in there is equating to the expectations that all of you and our residents and taxpayers expect. Um, but i- it is becoming, one would arguably disproportionate, when one considers the infrastructure of the, you know, that, that it's gonna be for several years, and we wanna do that because it's the right thing for the department, but at the same time, it does come at a cost to city taxpayers.
Well, statutorily, are there things that govern the structure of the Fire Commission, or?
How it's set up by the agreement? Uh, yes. Um, and, and I, I, there, there's no easy way to bring up that conversation with the town, other than to just have an honest dialogue and say, "This is how we do our business, this is how we want the fire department to run and do its business. We're gonna plan, we're gonna prepare." And my suspicion is that they'll either say, "Okay, we'll do that," as they did with the signing of the letter on the building, um, or they're gonna say, "We don't wanna do that," and then it's really up to all of you folks on the city council to say, "We're always gonna be able to meet our financial obligations in a jointly-owned department. We need the department that has any obligations to the city to do the same." How you come up with that, or how you figure that out, will help, but you guys gotta figure it out.
You can't have half an ambulance run around.
Right. And you can't have half a fire truck, and you can't have half a ladder. I mean, it's just gotta, it's either, everybody's all in, or they're not.
We did, didn't we increase or add some fees to our contracts? Not this year, but aren't we going to add fees to the contracts? I thought...
I think we talked about that.
In a period of, of time, I think.
Yeah.
I think we indicated an intention to.
Yeah. So I, so I know that we didn't, we didn't, but I know that we had discussed that, so that's something else that we would have to look at, is adding fees to the con- to the contracts.
Right now, you're in contracts with your townships for three years with three percent increases scheduled in all of them. So there, there's increases, but one would argue that, I would suggest, those are just merely close to cola increases. They don't increase capital needs, so if we buy a new ladder, an engine, or a fire truck, or a new ambulance, the townships are not paying for that. The owners, the city and, uh, the town are paying for that exclusively.
But then we have ownership and they don't.
Correct. I, I, I would contend that you're getting a better service with a better piece of equipment than you would otherwise be.
Lauren's had some conversations with the contracting entities about sharing capital costs, I mean, paying a fee that goes towards a capital, large capital purchase, hasn't been a lot of response to that.
Well, if you can say no, you would. I would.
Right. A- a- and I, and I think that, that's, that's the component. I mean, w- with the decisions that we made related to the borrowing tonight, to have an increased service, a b- better equipment, Milton's taxpayers are gonna pay. And, and so I would argue in the same thing, that with those contracts with the town, if we're sending out a better fire truck that's gonna be able to put out a fire faster, or a better ambulance that's gonna be able to service your needs, whether it be cardiac, stroke, or whatever it is that we're having, if we're sending something better out to you, and our taxpayers had to pay for that, and you're gonna be the benefactor of that, you can't keep getting that service for what you were paying for, have the old ambulance come, or the old fire truck come.
And if funds are stressed right now, in two thousand and fourteen, there's about a fifty or sixty thousand dollar brush truck that's on the capital expenditure schedule. The following year, there's a five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar fire truck replacement. If they're pressed for funds now, uh, you know what?
But the fi- is the fire pressed or two, or just EMS?
Both. I mean, that, that capital improvement list, i- is one thing to have a great capital plan, it's completely another to have a way of how you intend to finance it. And in this particular case, I know that our city commission members have, have pushed to just keep the twenty-five thousand dollars in there for the apparatus.
Yeah.
I've heard a couple times.
Right, and, and one could argue that could easily be up to fifty or a hundred thousand.
I couldn't wait if we took it out.
About seventy-five thousand right now.
The, the only thing I ask for you tonight is, um, is your support as a council, as the mayor, to ask when Connie and I come to these meetings, that there be a very, very strong encouragement that commission members recommend that the chief and his support staff work with our city staff to come up with proposed solutions for this in advance of the twenty-fourteen budget.
I agree with that, and it, it's not like we're going to make Lauren call for permission every time he writes a check, right? You know, it's not like that.
Actually, actually...
Like, like, he can get, he can get information from her, but we don't have to pay hourly like the way he's doing now, and we'll get our reports on time, not three months later, and then have to have mistakes in them because somebody was off because, on a maternity leave, or they had appendicitis, and so we have this excuse that we don't get it because of that.
Those aren't congratulations, those are really...
But that's not, but that's not, that's, I wanna be clear, that that's not Jenny or Lauren, that's the contract.
That's who you're calling for.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're not misinforming.
If we go and the city does it, well, at least we're going to get reports.
Well, and I think that's an important point, too, is this is not a failure of the people at that department, it's a lack of people at the department, and, you know, these are skill sets, they just don't have them.
They don't have the software or the...
Or any of it.
They don't have the support infrastructure around them. In addition to staffing his ambulance and making sure that all the staff are there for fire coverage, he has to come in and pay the bills. I mean, we have support staff that help all of that.
I think approaching it as the fact that they're shorthanded would be more tangible to him.
The other thing is, is they, I mean, there's two ways to deal with it. One is that they still write all their own checks, they just send us the information and we can just maybe enter it when they send it to us. We would have the bank statements mailed directly to us, that would be my preference, so you have some internal controls there. Or we can write the checks for them. It isn't like there's an all or nothing, there's one solution. I mean, we can work solutions out that are manageable.
I think it would...
So that there's still control.
I think it would be offensive to tell them that we're gonna write their checks for them. I think that would be hard for them to swallow, it would seem like we're taking over and parenting them, and I just, I think that would be hard for them to swallow.
Yeah, this is what I'm trying to, to figure out, how to present it in a term that doesn't sound, as you were saying, like we must do.
Yeah, and I completely understand what you're saying, Alder Person Welch, but my question for you in that is, how important is it to you as members of the city who make the council, who make this investment, to get lifetime accurate information? Because we don't let Howie, or Dan, or Lisa, or any one of our department directors write their checks. That goes through a very deliberate process by which multiple people know what's going on.
Right, but they're, we, they just work for us, too, and we don't just own the Fire Department, we're in a partnership.
There's gonna be some resistance.
Yeah, no matter how nicely you put it, they're going to resist. I can tell you that right now, they're not, because they're gonna think that we're horny in on the city, and no matter how nicely you put it, there's gonna be resistance there.
The makeup of the Fire Commission is designed to, like, require compromise. There's three on each side, so we'll have to come to some sort of a compromise on this.
But I think it's up to Jerry and Connie to work out those compromises.
Well, no, it's up to the, it's really up to the Fire Commission.
Well, I meant go with them, but not for us to delineate what those compromise, each of those compromises should be.
There's gonna be resistance both from the township, because, I tell you right now, Lauren's telling me that he gets complaints all the time, that he's in bed with the city and he's doing whatever we want, and they don't have any say, which is not true. But you're also gonna get a little pushback from Lauren, likes to run his own business his own way, and, I guess I don't have a problem with that, but like I told Jerry, there's six people in that room tomorrow night who are dedicated to the success of that department, and we'd like to help them, but we can't help them if we don't know we've got a developing problem. I mean, he's fine with solving a lot of problems, but if he's got one that's getting out of hand, we need to know about it when that possibility arises.
Well, he has previously asked if we would do their payroll, because it is a complicated process for firing, so I don't think he has a problem with us doing payroll at all. So in that regard, maybe that's a fair approach.
Right, right.
He was working very hard yesterday to come up with alternate solutions. I mean, he's looking at the contracts with the towns, he's looking at run calls and volume and all that sort of stuff, so he's very skilled in all those areas. I just wanna see it, A, so that Milton's taxpayers are made whole on that loan, and that B, moving forward, that this nationalized healthcare component is gonna have a big impact on Medicare and Medicaid. Nobody really knows yet what it's gonna be, and there's gonna be probably some good things that happen, some bad things that happen, and we're just gonna have to kind of figure it all out, but we're gonna do so having planned and prepared for the potential worst case. And that's what I want people to be prepared for as we develop the 2014 budget.
So, the action tonight would be to authorize the city administrator and other city staff to propose to the Fire Commission and to work with Chief Lippincott and the Fire Commission on some of these issues we've discussed. Got the motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 4L.
Right?
Yep.
This is...
Informational update, or no?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, this is primarily an informational update to the council. I know we've had some ongoing challenges, and members of the council and the mayor have inquired about where we're at with various code enforcement on the apartments that were burned, not yet repaired. Mr. Lang has proposed, as requested by Director Robinson, a timeline now for which he intends to complete those things. It's been longer in getting them than we thought that it would be, but he did, again, come in kind of at the 11th hour and did submit those timelines. Director Robinson has asked that we share this as an informational item with you at this point, and that if those deadlines are not met, a very direct email had come from the mayor saying, if you don't meet those deadlines, you proceed with the appropriate enforcement action.
It's finer in comparison.
It's much less for me to talk about than the EMS stuff, so...
Okay, on to item 4M. Discussion and possible action related to options to get citizen input and involvement in budget development process.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a follow-up from the council's request at our last meeting, I was looking at really three different options after we held a listening session and didn't get all the attendance that we had hoped for. I did like some of the suggestions that came from the council, and we followed up with some, what some other communities have done. Probably, I think, among the bigger things that I've noted to be a little bit more successful where we get feedback is when either staff or our elected officials go to where the people are, rather than ask the people to come to us. You know, this coming to this room and this body and having to get up to the microphone and talk is maybe a little bit intimidating for some. Some examples that I've seen, a little bit more interactive discussion, a library listening session that we had, that we got some more people that did come to that, but most recently, the mayor held a session at the gathering place. It was actually, I think, scheduled to be just part of a 2014 budget thing that they have guest speakers that come in once a month. Probably had half a dozen people that sat at the table, and we just told them different things that were going on. I know when the mayor was an Alder Person, he and Alder Person Welch had one at the gathering place, I think we got three or four people that came to that. What I heard from most folks is that kind of a restaurant tour might be a little bit more successful. So, there's two, there's three different options that I presented for you in the memo. One of them is a citizen satisfaction survey, and I kinda ask people to fill something out online. That is relatively minimal cost, only staff time to put something together on like a Survey Monkey, and then we put it on the city's website, ask people to, you know, kinda rank what they like, what they don't like about what we're doing, and we could ask 10, 15, 20 questions. The City of Milton does that, and then so they have all of their departments kinda rated and ranked, if you will, by what citizens value the most, so that might help you in terms of establishing priorities.
Are you gonna do the census because of the county?
We certainly could.
Yeah, there is a credit on the people.
Yep, yep, and we can certainly do that. There'd be a little bit more cost there, not a lot, but just, you know, the printing of it, and then bringing it in. Have them available at all the city facilities and say, if you wanna get a citizen satisfaction survey, just come in and fill it out, or grab one, fill it out, mail it back in, however you wanna do that. Give people a four to eight week window, relatively minimal cost. The second option is a little bit more of an interactive one. The City of Janesville did this a couple of years ago, they actually hired a consultant, and then they put in some software that they connected to their website, and actually allowed people to come in and, on that site, and type in what they wanted, and then that would spit back to them how much it would cost. Arguably, probably a lot more informational for the public, because one thing for people to tell you what they want, is completely another for them to be able to pay for. So, that is a little bit more expensive, and we didn't get to the point of researching that to get actually a cost estimate of what something like that would be, because I didn't know if you would want to even do that. The third option, I think, probably fits maybe our size of the community a little bit better, is that asking elected officials to accompany me on Friday mornings and do various restaurant tours, and say, okay, this Friday, it'll be Alder Person so-and-so, or the mayor, and the administrator, or the mayor, and our city treasurer, or whomever, different staff members, with different elected officials, saying, if you got something, a question, or whatever, meet us at Parkview Cafe on this Friday, meet us at Old Family Restaurant on this Friday, meet us at Charming Bees on this Friday, and I think by going to where the people are, we might be able to get a little bit more opportunity for feedback and...
I'd gladly assist with locations that food's involved.
So, I'm seeking council direction as to, what if any of these three options, or if you would like additional research to be completed?
Well, let's start off with like the monkey survey and the restaurant tour, and we can, and then we can talk to people about, would you want something more interactive? You know, where you put in what you want and it spits out a cost.
I'm getting over surveyed, you know, the Illinois toll wants my survey, everybody, everybody and their brother wants me to be surveyed. The restaurant tour, at least you talk to somebody.
And the monkey survey, it doesn't require, I mean, they're so simple to do. I mean, we might not get the feedback, but...
Right, if you have it, like, on our website and you tell people it's out there, we welcome you to come to it versus we're gonna infiltrate your inbox. Maybe people would be more willing to say, oh, I'll come check it out, and I'll say what it's about.
Yeah, I'd like to see one and three.
Well, it's about survey moments, and I don't know if I see what that is.
You said it's part of your strategic plan, correct?
And I think that you're well aware of how many people use your internet. There's quite a percentage.
And also what, was, we also were able to use the school district as, and send out survey moments to the employees of the school district, and got a lot of response from the school district employees.
What I think, what I found is that if, when I go into business and I see the owner, or people I've known for a while, I start asking the questions about things. People feel less intimidated when it's just a one-on-one conversation. I found out a lot, just like with the sign ordinance, and talking to business people, what do you think is fair, what do you think you can handle? And, you know, so my ideas came from what I'm talking to them, what they thought they would be able to afford, and what they would do sustain each year. And I think if, you know, if you want input, you know, I talked probably to four different business people in the last week about different things about the city, and one of the things was the debt limit, you know, that's one of the things, where are we getting all the money from, and explaining to them everything, and then after you explain to them, they're a lot more comfortable because they don't know all the situation. So I think sometimes I'm gonna encourage everyone to talk to people that you know, that you respect, and ask for honest answers, and I think you get just as much feedback as if, because you know them and it's less intimidating that way.
My wife will be happy to tell anybody what she thinks.
She didn't come to the meeting.
I'd be happy for the break.
So, one and three? And then listen to see if there's a difference in two?
Good, good, good.
I will be sending an email then, asking any of you who want to accompany staff on that tour. We're gonna kind of hopefully try to stay to a Friday schedule, just by then, show and make sure that we have all of our memos for council packets and agendas and all that stuff. Friday morning is probably a little bit easier for our calendars, the staff level will be able to manage that, because most of our other work is done. Please.
I'll make the motion to do one and three.
A second. There's a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the last one, outsourcing concessions. Alderman Verwink asked for this to be brought down.
Here's my concern now. I, when, with the splash park as an operation, are we gonna have people, I mean, like assuming people have swimming pools every day, are we gonna have people that clean the splash park every day, is that, or where they're gonna wash it down before it's used, or pick up the leaves or the twigs that have been blown in there? I mean, to me, it would make sense if we hire people to run concessions, then that might be those people who come early and do that. And then, the idea of hiring, and like you said, if we have a corner, maybe we send one person home and just have one person there, you know, that they're... Always have something for them when they come, that they're going to clean before it starts. So, I mean, I don't know, what was our plan, because I do think you're gonna have to have some cleaning every day before you start.
Operationally, we set it up in going into 2013 budget with an additional 1,200 hours of seasonal help. So those are the high school and college kids that come, and they were budgeted to the public works department with the thought of that it would be using them for the ice rink, and then the splash park. So we do have the money available there. When Mr. Jordal's proposal came forward, I told him, I'm not authorized to make a decision about accepting this or not. There's, it takes away a little bit of the risk, because I share what your vision was on, and that would be, it would be that we would have that person provide the support to run the park in addition to their concession stuff, so making sure that it's ready to go, making sure that everything is working, it's cleaned off, it's presentable, and it's gonna look nice, and then that they sell concessions in addition to any nonprofit organization that might be there getting a portion of the proceeds. So, although, I always get a little bit hesitant about saying whatever the financial risks might be, because if you get a bunch of whole cold days, it's kinda like the ice skating rink. Recreation isn't necessarily a profit-making thing, it's a value-greening thing.
The key use is keeping it neat and clean. If people come and it's not clean, they're not gonna come back, some aren't gonna come back, and we want them to come in. The other thing is, I know there's a local business that's purchased an ice cream truck that they're gonna be running, or to have available at the splash park as well. I don't know if you know that, but I was told today that they probably want ice cream truck in the operational splash park open, so they're probably be approaching us about buying...
Those parking lots?
So we better work on that permit.
So I mean, I know that's coming, I know that's coming, because I was told that today.
And I just have this...
Yeah, we don't have...
I wonder if popcorn clogs the drains. This is to be determined, I just, I just have this horrible feeling.
I think the food truck issue, whether it's ice cream or whatever it is, has gotta be a separate issue that we've talked about here. I'm not comfortable with it at all. Why I look at it is, are business squatters in the community, they pay no peddages, they pay no utilities, they just sit there and make money that they take back out of the community with them, so...
So, Dan, what more did you wanna discuss about this?
Well, I just, that I would rather see it in-house, and where we can use those people for dual purposes, rather than outsource it. You know, and I think that'd be a better value, and we're creating jobs for our local kids as well, you know, they might hire them, too, but then, are we gonna hire separate people then to come in just for a couple hours to clean it, or an hour to clean it?
Wouldn't make sense, I don't know.
It wouldn't make sense, and I guess that's what my point...
Put a limit on where these kids are gonna be eaten and drinking, just like, except for the clogging the drains up and throwing stuff around.
I just have this, this little voice in the back of my brain that says, while they're running through that, it's gonna be...
And is there gonna be a supervisor...
I know, we can see what the City of Janesville does to keep their food out of their drink.
I guess I envision the concession person being this kind of supervisor, too, of what's going on, because there are gonna be kids dropped out, there's gonna be, there're gonna be some horseplay, and if there's not any supervision, you have to have a strong, you know, somebody inside that concession stand comes out and say, hey, you're not, you're not gonna be here, you're gonna have to leave unless you adhere to the rules of the... Because if you don't think that's gonna happen, you just go watch the playground at recess.
We, we've had two inquiries from our students who supervise the ice rink, two of our strongest kids, expressed interest in being supervised at the splash park. And I told them, I said, I need to have this conversation with the city council first, and then, I like the idea of the city being employer for a variety of different reasons. There's not a lot of opportunities for jobs for kids in the city. I mean, if you're not working at Piglet Wiggly Day's Hardware, or working for the city, you're getting on that bus, or you're just asking mom and dad, or you're riding a bike and you're going to games, so to have three or four more jobs for kids in the city, I think is a good thing, get them interested in government. But I do want you to just know the goods and the bads of both sides of it, and so when the gentleman presented it to me, I said, here it is, and you folks make a decision.
So we've budgeted for these kids to be seasonal workers.
Right.
Created the idea forever, but we can see how it goes initially.
Since we are beginning to make for the first season, I visit complete season, oh, we learn a lot.
Correct. So the recommended action was to not outsource?
Correct. The recommended action was to not privatize concessions at the splash park in 2013, options for 2014. That was the recommendation from personal finance.
Do we have a motion to accept the recommended action?
We accept the recommendation from personal finance. Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General items, next meeting will be July 2nd, 2013. Mayor Alder Person reports. I don't have anything. I don't have anything.
For those of you who don't know on this United Ethanol issue, I did contact Senator Cullen and Representative Jorgensen, I sent them the first eight order complaints that we had from DNR, also sent them the two that we got this weekend. I haven't heard back from Senator Cullen or anything, but Jorgensen's aide told me that DNR is meeting with United Ethanol, or United Cooperative staff this week, and after they get done with their meeting, Jorgensen and his aide, staff are going to meet with the vice president of human resources and safety for United Cooperative, to see what they can get going.
Thank you.
Oh, I got finished painting the dugout at Liberty, the back of it, and the lady asked me when we were going to put the fence back up.
As soon as you're done painting it.
I told her, I'm painting, so I want to let you know, I finished painting the back today, there's some other needs to be painted, but the fence could be put back up, and I think she'd be happy to, okay, so.
All right, any other Alderman reports? Staff report, city administrator.
Fourth of July parade is rapidly approaching, if you have interest in marching or riding as a council, a group of people, if you want.
Are we, are you going to provide instruments?
Yeah. You say, I, I offer it every year, if you folks want to be in, let me know by Friday the 21st, please.
I will, I will record, I will, I will be in if somebody else is.
I'll be in, I'll be in.
Two, okay.
So you've got a convertible with the space for two?
Can I, can I...
I'm, I walk, when I go, I walk and hand out candy.
Hand out, thank you.
Candy wins elections.
No throwing of candy.
No throwing of candy? What's the good?
Throwing, you can hand out candy.
Have to walk along the side.
Well, I throw to the bag.
Everything is very much in dispute.
What's the mode of transportation going to be, is it something we can get out and
give out candy, or...
Get a wagon done.
I will see what...
You provide your kids to us?
Yes, I will be, I will gladly do that.
So you're going to, are you going to be with us?
No, I pushed them out on the Madison Avenue that day, so.
We line them up and then, then we walk.
Me?
Yeah.
I walked last year.
I'm not walking if it's above 90, though.
Last year was too high.
So plans are tentative.
Yes, I'll line up, but no walking if it's...
All right, anything else, Jerry? That's it, public works.
Splash park, toys are in, we have to leave about 30 days after the concrete was done. That's why it's not, you know, a lot more of a, of a, we're doing landscaping this week, actually.
Is there landscaping going around the outside of that fence?
That's the fence, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and then blacktop was, I did get that done, we sharpened the blacktop.
Yep, they did.
They got it finished.
Well, I don't know if they got it finished, but they got it started.
Yeah, it started, yeah, so, yeah, there's some landscaping going on, but there's not a lot, not a lot, a couple of trees, a little bit of zebra, and up close there's trees where the shrubs are, and then we're going to probably give those donated benches at the, down down...
We have some in-kind contributions that are coming in that were part of the fundraising project, I actually met with a gentleman today, was very excited, he came in with his granddaughter, they had done a bench in memory of his wife, and so he was excited about that getting in, he was excited the project actually happened, so, and he's going to bring his granddaughter down there and show, you know, and donate it, so I think it's a neat part of that project, can be a couple of them.
What are we doing, like a ribbon cutting or something down there?
Soon as it's open, yep.
You're actually the first one to go under and get wet.
That's going to have a long way to picture that.
Okeydoke.
Aren't we all going to have a run-through?
I think we should. And on our campaign literature.
All right, police department.
We continue gathering our...
Five hundred some proofs for accreditation, we have split up the duties amongst eight or nine police department employees, and it's going a lot faster than I assumed it would, and people are very, working their butts off, to put it mildly, and working together, which was very nice to see, and some people that finished earlier are actually volunteering to do more, so it's going well.
Staff working on this, you said?
Everybody's working on it except for third shift. We, we make you earn your, your promotion here, so Lisa, finally.
We're in the world of summer reading, we started off doing, we had 625 people visit the library that day, checked out over 800 items, you'll see on the brochures that I handed out, about 86 programs we have to put together for this summer for children, teens, and adults. I'm really proud of what we're offering, some of it we worked on with the school district, we had, we have an early literacy program this summer called Wise Owl Little Owls, and helping younger kids to read and work with a reading specialist on this program, we're excited about that. We also kind of anti-bullying program with, there's a school that was well-attended, so that was really fun, so, yeah, so it's going to be a great summer again if we're like...
Can I bring my teddy bear?
Yes, you can.
Or something like this.
These are filling up.
What happens if they don't retrieve them, is there some report filed?
That's what happens, where they forgot about them, you don't even know why, it seems horrible, but we do keep them for them, they remember.
And we charge a babysitting fee.
That's it, all right. Joint fire. City clerk.
In light of the personal finance, I have 160 licenses to create and sign and laminate tonight, next week, next, today, this week, next week, to get out for all the bartenders and operators and alcohol licenses, so it'll be busy per day. Last night I got to meet with the interior decorator that works for Angus Young, and we got to look at carpet samples and color samples for the new building, she presented me about 20 books for carpet samples, and I had to narrow it down to about two or three, and staff will kind of look and be able to choose the area, so that was actually pretty exciting.
That include the plush carpeting for Chief Labor's office?
It's pretty plush, yes, yes, I was told that the police department, they care, but they don't care, so hopefully when I say, here's where we narrowed it down, do you have suggestions, do you like some things, if they don't care, then chief is...
Or wet.
All right.
Trap-free.
All right, city treasurer.
Just working on the budget.
All right.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, per one, per any deliberating or negotiating the purchase, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, reference to police department union contract negotiations, and annexation agreement.
Do you have a second?
Sure.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.